I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. And this evening, we have with us Mrs. Durst from Lee Elementary and some of her students. And they're going to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Mrs. Durst, if you want to bring your kids up. They are also going to be doing a presentation for us in a little bit about their Farm Science Lab experience. So you guys turn around. And I am going to introduce everybody we have here. We have Mrs. Durst. We have Alexis Stathopoulos. Kaylee Brickle. Audrey Moore. Audrey Marcel. Michael Stefforia. John Kinsora. And Bentley Anderson Gerard. Is that everybody? Okay. If at this time, if I could ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you guys want to turn around. Whenever you're ready, Mrs. Durst.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you. Okay, next is our mission statement. Sarah.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Do you want to call? Chris.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
I am here. And Ryan and Dave are absent at those.
Thank you. Next would be a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, approval of the consent agenda items as presented. Motion?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
I would like to introduce Mr. John Estrada. He is being recommended tonight as the Food Service Director and Culinary Arts Teacher at Richmond High School. He comes to us from Decker, Michigan, Decker Community Schools. And we look forward to having him join our team.
Yay, welcome. Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next is our True Blue Moment. It is a time during our meetings when we like to showcase something exciting or good that is happening in our district. And tonight, we're going to ask Mrs. Durst and her class to come on back up. And they are going to talk to us about the Farm Bureau Insurance Mobile Science Lab. I'm going to wait and have them come up in a minute. Oh, okay. Can everyone hear me without my microphone loud enough? Okay. Yes. It was a good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight to share about the wonderful program called the Farm Lab that we had this year that we were lucky enough to be a part of through grant and through our wonderful PTO who helped fund the Farm Lab. We had science lessons for grades kindergarten through fourth grade. And each class got to have their own individualized, hands-on science experiment out in the lab, which was parked out in our parking lot for four days. And K through two had 30-minute lessons. And grades three and four had 50-minute lessons. And they were absolutely wonderful, wonderful. And so for our event, I just wanted to show you, if I can do this without screwing you up. I just wanted to show you some of the post-quiz and post-pretest here. There we are. I'm here. Each grade had, I'm going to work on our thing here. They had us take a pre-test before the lab. It's not going to open. Okay. That's all right. I don't think it's going to open, but that's all right. I don't think it's going to open. But what it is, is they're in a pre-test. So we let children were introduced to some vocabulary. Asked them some questions about parts of a seed. And then asked them, they had to know what the word germinate was, which of course, none of them knew what that was before the Farm Lab came. And K1, 2 either took it in their tablet, or they took it in their computer lab. And then grades three and four took the pre-test and post-test on their own laptops. And the post-test is also for you to see what they learned and what they didn't. Also for the Farm Lab to use for their benefit, to see what they need to improve on the program and whatnot. It was really excellent. And I have to give a kudos up to Amelia Miller, who was former student of mine in kindergarten in third grade, who contacted me to get the program going. I think it's awesome that we can have graduates come and contribute back to the schools that they went to. So it was a wonderful, wonderful thing. So I hope we can continue this in the future. So now what we're going to do is my first graders are going to have the board members come up, and you are going to plant a seed. And they're going to let you know what you need to do to plant your seed and take care of it at home. So my first graders will come on back out. I'm a little nervous. And I'll let the board members and the students come on up. They're going to each work with each other, which you pair it up here. So similar to what they had, each student had his black bag for their... Do we have to take a test? I'm going to ask you. What does the word germinate mean? More nervous. You know what? Let me grab a pen. Hold on. You're going to tell your person that you're working with, so they can put their cup. And they're going to need to put dirt in their cup. And then they'll come halfway with dirt. If I get some, I'm going to get a dirt in my cup.
Halfway? Okay. All right.
Oh, half, whoa. Yeah. Put my hand on top. Got it. Is that halfway? You think you're warm? It's just like in the playoff. We got to bring our dirt because we need to show the competition.
A little bit more? This is good?
Ooh, I think we need more dirt.
All right. About halfway, that's it.
A little bit more.
Halfway?
All right, Jen.
Okay, I'll make the hole.
You don't know?
Cover it.
Oh!
I got a cup.
Like that?
Don't let it fall. It's going to be a mess.
Back in the bag, so no water. You do put some water in? Just a little. It's just a little water. Just a little? With the lamp? So you tell me when I'll stand. And I'll put it in the van. And I hope my stuff doesn't fall out. The seed, did you put the seed in yet? Just a little sample of water. A hole for the seed. You don't have your seed in there? Let's see if I put the seed in. Now, am I done? And now that I'm ready for it to grow, it's going to grow. It's going to grow. By the window. It's going to grow. Every single day? You know, I put just that much water in.
So I have to put it in the...
Like a little bit in it? And this is going to grow? You promise?
Oh, no. So something like that.
You put your seed in?
Yep.
Don't mind there. You need water.
Should we put this in the bag first before we put the water?
Listen, I did the best I could. Don't tip it. I already spilled it.
Do I keep it in the mess by the...
Okay. All right. Well, I'll just put some more in. And she says it's going to grow. You promise me it's going to grow? Okay.
All right, I'm going to go put it on. All right. Water in it.
Take it care of it. Leave it in the bag so it stays...
Do you have water? Oh. What is our plan? I don't want to...
I'm nervous.
I'm not good at it.
No, I took somebody's seed.
I have one of these too.
Took somebody's?
Oh, no.
Chris, is that your pen that I just... Okay, now my first graders have planted their seeds. And my first graders helped them. And so remind them one more time. Where do they have to put their bag so that it will grow? Okay. And when they water it, do they leave it in the bag or do they keep it sealed up after they water it? Or we do after we water it? We got to keep it what?
In the bag.
Sealed up. Because it's like a what? What does it work like? That seal keeps it nice and warm?
Like a what?
Like a greenhouse? Greenhouse. All right? All right, well, that's it. And they're going to grow, right? Everybody... They're going to grow. Promise? All of yours will. Okay. All of theirs grew. Good news. Thank you very much. Thank you. Can't wait to eat the beans. Totally. Yes. No.
No. Mine didn't.
Thank you, Mrs. Durst and her class. Okay, next, moving on to our presentations. Strategic planning, Brian?
Good evening. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having John Silver here from the Michigan Leadership Institute, who's going to give the board a snapshot of what we're going to be doing over the next several weeks with not only our staffs at each of our buildings, but our parents and students in each of the buildings together, begin building the foundation for a strategic plan. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to John and let him go from there.
Thank you. Hi, it's nice to see some familiar faces. I was here a couple of years back, working with you folks on some board governance, so it's nice to be back. When we plan a vacation, what's the first thing we do? Very first thing you do when you plan a vacation?
Decide where you want to go.
Thank you. You decide where you want to go. Very first thing. Sometimes in strategic planning, we forget that step. We get very busy setting goals and planning what we want to do, but we forget to take the step of deciding where the final destination is. So as we embark on a strategic planning process here, the critical thing is, I like to borrow a copy and begin with the end in mind. And to do that, we're going to use your mission statement, your well-established mission statement, which I was really pleased to see that you recited at the beginning of each of your meetings, and keep our whole focus on it. So as you look at your mission statement, what I want you to really zero in on is, what's the final product within that? When you think about your students, your graduates, when you have a student graduate from Richmond Community Schools, what you want them to be are students who are empowered to be successful in a global community, right? That's your finished product. So everything you do from the time your kids come in, in kindergarten, all the way through, even preschool, is all designed to help them reach that final destination, graduate from Richmond Community Schools, and be empowered to be successful in a global community. So it makes sense now, as you begin your strategic planning process, that the very first thing that we do is take the time to determine, what does that look like? When you think about that graduate, what fundamental knowledge, skills, and abilities do each of those graduates need to have when they leave Richmond Schools? They're going to be all a little bit different, maybe quite a bit different, and going on different paths, but fundamentally, fundamental knowledge, skills, and abilities that you think that every Richmond Schools graduate should have. That's the finished product that we want to consider. Once that's done, then you want to take a step back and take a look at where you are as a district, compare it to where you want to be, what you want those students to be, and look at those most critical things that you need to do in order to bridge the gap between where you are and ultimately, what you want your students to be when they graduate from here. So as we meet with these various groups, I'll be meeting with some of your high school students, staff members from each of your three levels, and parents and community members from all three levels as well. We're going to take them through an exercise where we're going to have those key stakeholders in your district help us determine what it is that we want those graduates to share in common. What is that finished product? So I'm going to do an abbreviated version with you tonight. What I'll do with them will take longer, but just to give you a sense of what we're going to be doing with them, I'm going to walk you quickly through a process to give you a sense of what we'll be doing. Give you a chance to ask questions and give feedback, and really set the stage again for, I think, within just a couple of weeks, what we're going to be getting rolling with your folks here in the district. So with that in mind, we're going to take you through a brainstorming process. And brainstorming means that there's no right or wrong answer, and there's no need for debate or discussion. People find this to be really difficult sometimes because there's an inclination to want to debate and discuss, so I'm going to encourage you not to do that. The way I'll do this is, I'm going to have a call on each one of you, just kind of keep going around several times. I'm going to invite you, if your brain is not storming at that very moment that I call on you to pass, that's just fine. And you could think about it a little bit more before I get back to you. And literally, whatever comes to mind as you think about that graduate, fundamental knowledge, skills, and abilities that you think that graduate needs to have, that every graduate from here needs to have in order to be successful. Just tell me what comes to mind. I'm going to write it down, and then we'll do one more thing with that afterward. We will not be identifying seed parts. It's something else. So, if I may, what do you think? What's the first thing that comes to mind? Or you can pass.
No. Be able to speak more than one language.
Okay. Thank you.
Wish I would've known ahead of time. I could've made a list. But I guess I want, within the years here, I'd like them to feel as though they've developed like a mastery and competence over certain things, whether it be elective classes or the more academic ones. But I want them to kind of find their niche in something that they feel that they have mastery and competence over.
I always say well-rounded in the sense of that we offer something for every student that whatever their goal, figure out what their goal is early and make sure that we offer that. You know, not everybody is a college-bound student. You know, there's other avenues. So I don't know what that means, but I always say well-rounded, or that we give them the chance to find what it is they want to do. I don't know. That probably doesn't make sense, but that's...
There's no right or wrong answer.
That's right.
We're not debating.
We're not debating. Lord knows I wouldn't do that.
Have students have...
Wait, wait. Brian doesn't have to say something?
I'm sorry.
Oh, we're not passing Brian.
You take Brian off the list.
Oh, we're going to... Don't take Brian off the list.
He totally passed right over him.
I want students to be able to recognize that there are different points of views, and that we need to respect those points of views, and help try to understand each other to come to a solution.
Students to have an opportunity to job shadow. So they have an idea of different jobs that are out there. I think students should be able to think outside the box. Create versus just regurgitate.
Can I do one?
You sure can.
I think that students should have the opportunity to develop the communication skills that you're going to need outside of high school.
Come back around.
Along the lines of what Haley and Brian said, just experience in working in a team atmosphere, or experience in dealing with different personalities, because inevitably, in the real world, you're going to have to work with people. And just being prepared, you know, that not everybody's like you.
I would say the ability to problem solve.
To know that there's a whole lot more to the world than just Richmond, that there's way more than just what we see here in our school community. And give them those experiences.
Okay.
I want all students to have a mentor, someone whether it could teach you, a staff member, a community member, that they can talk to and work through what decisions they want to make, where they want to go.
I think more electives, opportunities. Which is difficult, but...
A graduate needs to be empathetic and compassionate.
Okay. I'm getting excited we're not done. I'm just tearing this one up. Another one?
No, they all took mine.
Anything else to add?
Other than just being well-rounded, but I think we've kind of...
I think we've got that one. Because I've uncovered it.
Not the top of my head.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
I think the educational process needs to bring someone into their self-awareness, so not just the outside world, but also who they are.
I do have one now. I think it's important that when people graduate, they feel like they have a voice.
Anything else anyone would like to add?
That when they leave here, they are the change agents for the future. Positive change agents.
So we'll stop there. And what I'm going to ask you to do, you should see nearby you, and if you don't, I'll give you some blue sticky dots. We're going to get you up and moving again. Not as much fun as planting seeds. I apologize, but still. I'm going to ask you to come up, and you've got six of these. I may ask you to take a look at what's here and identify the six that you think are most critical. You may think that there are more than six that are important, but I want you to do what you need to do for yourself to make that decision. Of all of the ones that you've identified, which are the six that you think are most critical and most important in terms of that Richmond graduate being ready to take on the world successfully. Whenever you're ready, come on up.
I think I can answer some.
Okay.
Let's save my last two dots.
Because you want to see what we're going to do?
No.
Haley, she knows what she wants.
I could've drawn six of my dots on my...
I could've drawn six of my dots, I'm lying.
Right. Some differences of opinion, but there were some that certainly stood out. It looks like those included for those graduates to be well rounded, to know what they want to do, to recognize and respect various points of view. They've had opportunities for job shadowing to help them know what to do. The ability to problem solve and awareness of the worlds beyond Richmond, I think those are the ones that stood out. So let me just ask you a question. If you produce graduates that all had those basic skills and abilities in common, how would you feel about that? Would you feel like you had done a pretty, pretty fair job? So bear in mind, what we'll be doing is, again, all those various stakeholder groups will take our time and go through the process a little bit more thoroughly and deliberately. But in effect, that's what all of your stakeholders are gonna be doing. They're gonna be going through the process of identifying those skills, abilities, that knowledge that you think all Richmond graduates should have. And my job at the end of that will be to put it all together and to look for those common threads. So when you talk to students and staff members and parents and community members and board members, what are those things that commonly are felt that all Richmond graduates should have? In effect, that's gonna help us develop a profile of what you want your graduates to know and be able to do. Once you've done that, again, that will be kind of the end of the first phase of the process. You will have identified that target for yourselves. And then you take that step back, take a little bit of time to again determine where are we currently as a district? How are we doing now relative to that? Where is that gap? What do we need to do to bridge that gap? And then you get into identifying specific goals and strategies to help you get to where you want to be. Does that make sense? So are there any questions or comments? I went through that just as quickly as I could, I think got the rest of the meetings you're going with as well.
No, I just think, I know we had talked about this is gonna be happening fairly quickly, right? Because we're looking.
Yeah, the communication for the parent aspect is going out this week. We did all the labels last week, got the envelopes ready. So there'll be three opportunities for parents. I shouldn't say that on the parents, but community members, business leaders in our, in our community to come give their input. I'll just elaborate a little further. You'll see the blue part is really what we focused on. From all of this information we're gonna gather, now we need to look at the programs, the services, the structure of the school day, the school year, to talk about how are we gonna provide that quality education to reach that?
How we get there.
How we get there. And that's where it's gonna be a narrow focus group. And each one of these meetings, we're gonna offer opportunity if parents are interested or staff are interested in being part of that next level, to really sit down and begin planning this out and what that's gonna look like for Richmond Community Schools.
So parents are gonna get some type of a letter and then they're gonna communicate back to you if they're interested in this opportunity?
To attend one of the three nights. It's on December 11th. It will be at the middle school media center, January 8th at the middle school media center, and January 22nd at the elementary media center. But you don't have to necessarily go by that level. There'll be three opportunities for parents to give, what, what are they looking for from us as a district that they want their child to have when they leave Richmond Community Schools? And then from those three meetings, we'll then have what I'm calling Phase Two, a strategic focus committee to take all that information, it's okay, now what do we do? Is what our current structure, our current practices, our current programs, our current offering, is that getting what we want to do? Or do we need to start making some adjustments? Improvements? We may need to have some conversations about, do we need to stop doing some things and start doing something else? That's gonna involve some key stakeholders in that, that, that second part because there's, there's a lot of pieces that we have to look at.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
It's a good start. Okay, moving on. Next is public comment. It's the portion of our meeting that if anyone would like to address the board, they can do so. Come up to the podium. There is a card up there if you want to leave your name and phone number. If you have a question for the board that you would like answered. It is not a question and answer period. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Good evening, board members. I'm Jeff Yarck, state representative for all the area of the district that's in McComb County. The St. Clair Court, St. Clair County portion is not part of my house district. So mainly Richmond, Richmond Township and Lenox. So just a few things, just wanna share with you, get around, I'm gonna get around to all the school boards meetings. Just a little piece, my mom was a first grade teacher, so education's a big priority of mine, I grew up with it. So I'll tell you that I, for those of you, some may know me, some may not, but I was on Richmond City Council for seventeen years. I ran to go to Lansing because of my experience at local and the understanding that local and state don't play well together. We have, the state and local government and community and schools have not been good partners in serving our citizens. And that's one of the things that drove me to go to Lansing and push for something better. I've met with all the superintendents and now I'm getting around to the school boards. Sorry, it's November. I know I've been there eleven months, trying to get around. Just a few things, I'm happy to see that we did have a hundred twenty dollar per person approval increase this year, and I know Richmond got additional ninety-four thousand at risk. I'll say I understand proposal A hasn't worked out the way I think originally was hoped, and I understand that school funding hasn't been increased to keep up with inflation. I get that. I'm trying to do my part to advocate for both local government, school districts, that whole issue of local funding. I want to just comment to, you know, but I, I know that in having come from local government, I'm not sure that even with this downturn of the recession, we're gonna see it real quick come back. And I think it's important that school districts and school, uh, school districts collaborate with each other, continue that, those efforts, and the collaboration between school districts and their local governments. I think those pieces in the county, places that we can all collaborate, I think is still a necessary thing that we need to see. I wanna comment, I appreciate that the superintendent, myself and the superintendent and the superintendent of Armada at New Haven, we get together about, I don't know, every three or four months and have breakfast together and I kind of bring up what bills are going on in Lansing and they kind of give me feedback on what's happening. And I think I'm actually due to pay for the next, so. Superintendent, what do you wanna call and schedule? I know I, it's my turn to buy breakfast. In fact, it is that I've had, I've actually met up with all the superintendents that, in my district. One thing I wanna say, I, I wanna support civics and it's very important that I want make my office available to help student government, the civics class, anything we could do to help connect students with Lansing. I'm not sure about the program in Richmond, but I remember in high school, we really didn't talk about state government or local government too much. And I wanna be a good resource for assisting in that type of education and help our youth understand the process. So with that, I'll be available still after the meeting, I know you have closed session. But if anybody had any questions or wanted to share anything, I'm here. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Next, Board of Education Student Rep Report. Haley.
Okay, well, all three buildings are getting ready for Christmas, so that's what this whole report is really. Our elementary school, the holiday concert is this Wednesday. The third grade performs at 6:00 PM and the fourth grade at 7:15, and that is in the Lee Cafeteria Gym Area.
That's Wednesday, you said?
Yes, the 29th, that is Wednesday, right?
Yep.
Yes. And then, um, December 4th through the 8th, the student council at the Lee School is collecting items for Sandy's kids. And then, um, December 6th through 8th, the student council is holding a fundraiser where they'll be selling smentals at lunch, so the smelly pencils. Um, and then also on November 30th, the elementary school will be having their True Flu assembly. At the middle school, they're in their final week of the Beautiful Me Program, which is the fifth grade girls promoting positive self-image program. Students at the middle school will be participating in the MISD Diversity Summit. And recently, the eighth grade students had the opportunity to attend the Holocaust Memorial Museum trip. And for the high school and the middle school, our band concerts and choir concerts are combined for Christmas. So on the 6th and the 7th is the band, and that's at 7:00 PM in our high school auditorium. And the 13th and the 14th is the choir, and that is also at 7:00 PM in our high school auditorium. Also, we are gonna have student artwork on display in the lobby as always. Now to the high school, like I said, we're just prepping for Christmas really. Our National Honor Society is participating in Sandy's Kids as well. And then SAD also takes part in that. They're actually meeting this Wednesday to discuss all of their stuff, so. And then Key Club, of course, we do our giving tree. We do that every year, we set up the Christmas tree in the media center right around the corner, and then we hang up the ornaments that say, you know, certain things that people may need the holiday season, such as, you know, toilet paper, soap, and then other fun things like gifts. And then you just take an ornament and you're supposed to come back and just leave the gift under the tree. So we have that going on before we break. Also, something exciting that we're bringing back, we haven't done it in a couple of years, the student government is gonna host a door decorating contest. So your second hour classes, it's what it's gonna be. You have from December 13th until the Wednesday that we get out, so the 20th. Yeah, the Wednesday before we get out. You only have the week to decorate the door for your second hour classroom. And there's some, there's a lot of rules, like it has to apply to the subject that that class is somehow. And then you have, you cannot work on it during class at all, and if you get caught, then you're disqualified. And I think it's just lunch periods and after school. But, and then you can only be in that week timeframe. So, you know, teachers are already trying to figure out how to get their plan before we go. So that'll be fun. And also something new that we're bringing this year is we're gonna do an ornament exchange. It's a school-wide ornament exchange after school on the Tuesday before we get out, so the 19th. And then Spirit Week, we always do Christmas Spirit Week, so we have Monday is Pyjama Day, that, that same week. And then we have Color Day where each class gets a different Christmas color, Christmas accessory day, and then we finish on Thursday with our ugly sweater contest. And then also something to keep note of is the backpack blessings. It's important that we donate during this time of year specifically, so that's in the high school office is a bin for the food for that. And I believe they're in every building.
Yes.
Right?
There.
Yes, okay. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. Brian, Superintendent Legislative Update.
To piggyback on what Haley said, I want, I had an opportunity to go this past Friday to see, to Beni Atis, to see A Christmas Story. There's some of our students that were in that play. Excellent job, JP was in that play. I wanna, he did a wonderful job, our videographer here. They, they did a phenomenal job, it was, it was really outstanding. I wanna thank the Richmond Lions Club and the Richmond Rotary. The Richmond Lions Club donated a thousand dollars and the Richmond Rotary donated twenty-five hundred dollars to our high school robotics team to help them, you know, as you know, that program is quite costly and Nick Mapp, this is the leader of that, or the head person of the robotics for this year, and his team, they've been out soliciting sponsorships and so forth, so I appreciate their donation. I wanna give a thank you to Mrs. Durst for the Lego Robotics Team and their competition when I went to Henry Ford in Utica, and Mr. Gillespie, this is the first time our middle school team competed, and I'm drawn and blind, was it Marysville, Marysville? I didn't get a chance to get to the middle school one, but for the first time, they, they met the goals they set for themselves, and it's only good things and better results can happen, so I appreciate that. January 6th is our high school robotics kickoff. Our team will be at KPEC High School where they have the launch of what the six-week build session will be. I wanna echo again what Haley said about blessings and a backpack from the community and their donation box in each of the schools. On our website, there's a list of items that you can donate. Those go right to many families in our, in our district. We have several volunteers that come into the old science rooms and pack backpacks for students, so they have food over the weekends. It's all a community sponsored event, so from that angle.
Brian, what number, what number? How many of those are we handing out?
I believe we are about twenty-six backpacks now. We started the program two years ago, two, when I actually was, was, but it's grown. And the group continues during the summer. They actually have made arrangements, the family to deliver them to the homes for those that do not have cars and able to get the food with Kroger and different grocery stores to get fresh fruits and vegetables and so forth to get them to hit the home. So for those families, it, it has made a difference in those child, those children's education when they come here not hungry over the weekend, so. From that angle. Not much has been going on the legislative front from the recess they've had over the Thanksgiving holiday. Tomorrow, I'll be watching the Energy Policy Committee that meets tomorrow regarding electric choice for schools and how that may or may not impact Richmond Community Schools. The Senate Education Committee has a couple of bills, they're taking up three bills. One is House Bill 4665, which would allow students who are in a strict discipline academy to remain in that strict discipline academy once they've met the criteria. It currently doesn't affect Richmond Community Schools, but it potentially could if we have students that are in that situation. House Bill 4735 expands the definition of institutions to provide post-secondary dual enrollment to include out-of-state colleges. As a representative of this district, I oppose any, any bill that takes school aid funds and puts it into higher education. We took this shift several years ago, about the four hundred and seventy dollars. We're just now back up where we were. Our costs have continued to increase and, and the school aid fund has been spread out too thin, and it's not what I believe going to, what it was intended to go toward. So that bill, I'm watching closely. That particularly affects the districts that are in the southern Michigan border who would be able to send students to Ohio or other institutions across state lines. And those two institutions will get dual enrollment dollars. And then the, the resolution, I don't know a whole lot about this, but I'm watching this one, the Senate concurrent Resolution 25 that asks the Congress to expand the federal exemption and contribution limits to education savings programs. Again, I'll be watching those closely. And as long as we just watch, as we end the legislative session, what, what legislation is introduced and passed during this three, four week period.
Is the charter school, charter, the, the, it's a bill that allows charter schools to get money from the ISD way? I can't, I can't, do you know what I'm talking about?
There is a, there was a bill that was introduced that if a county passed a millage, that the dollars were to go to the local school district. So if McComb were to pass a CT millage and those funds would go to the 21 schools in McComb County. There was a bill that introduced that would allow charter schools who oftentimes may not be students who live within that county to also receive those funds. I am, I'm not aware that it's dead yet, but it hasn't gone through the process to be, to be, to ultimately get to a governor's signature.
Got it.
It's still one that is out there that I'm watching.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
We received an invitation to the aftergo for the state, or for the state of the county. If anybody wants to go, I'm going. I think Margaret said she was going, Brian was going.
Brian's going too.
So if anybody wants to go and join in that, about.
It's December 6th.
December 6th.
Okay.
Yeah, at McComb College.
At the Perform Arts Center.
At the Performing Arts, yeah.
What day of the week?
A Wednesday, I think.
It's a Wednesday. Sixteen.
Anybody else? Haley, moving on, our one action item, the approval of the overnight trip to Washington, DC. As everyone knows, Dr. Lad was here two weeks ago and made his presentation about taking the students to Washington, so there is a sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight Washington, DC request as presented at the November 13, 2017 board meeting and in the attached documentation. attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And Brian, you'll let Dr. Ladd know that he's good to go? Okay, next, looking for a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of superintendent's evaluation.
Someone, support.
Is that you, Chris?
Yep.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And we won't be coming back with any decision, okay?